You may think plastic bags can be recycled curbside, but they can't. When you put recyclables in a plastic bag, it gets tangled in the sorting machine and ruins recycling. Let's all properly recycle.
Let's all properly recycle. Let's all properly recycle. Let's all properly recycle. Leave out the plastic bags.
Hey, new house of grace. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Why on earth would you do it in ours? Hillsborough County put waste in its place.
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos, only on HTV.
Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Planned City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 9th, 2019 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign to register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on an agenda item, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be presented. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Green to lead us in the prayer and in pledge of allegiance. All rise.
... I've come before you today to praise and reverence. I'll be thankful for this day and for the many blessings, and so do each of us. Thank you for this great country and the opportunity to live freely. We ask your blessings for our leaders and for our men and women in uniform, whether home or above. Please bless these proceedings and give each of us here today a blessing to make decisions that are of the best interest of people for the whole county. This is the asking of all of you.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Institute of five, United States of America, Institute of Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Dickerson? Dix?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Kress? Marino?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Thrower?
Here.
You have form.
Okay, thank you. Next, I would like to present plaques of appreciation to two of our former planning commissioners. I'm going to call them up one at a time. I'm going to go down to the microphone down there, and I'll call them up one at a time. Okay. First, and I'm going to read, first I wanted to call Jacqueline Wilds. Commissioner Wilds has been on the Planning Commission for eight years, from 2011 to 2019. I'm going to read her plaque. Jacqueline Wild, City of Tampa appointee, in recognition and appreciation of your exemplary service on the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission, 2011 to 2019, and your vision, leadership, and commitment to improving the quality of life in our community, Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. Personally, I've enjoyed serving with her. She's been a great leader. She's served as chairman a couple times when I've been out, and she has been an excellent commissioner. And like I said, I've learned a lot working with you, and I've been honored to have the opportunity to serve with you. And I know everybody on the board's going to miss you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And I'll let you have a few. He has the opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon, my fellow Commissioners. I'll say that to you for one last time. It was a very honor for me to be here. I can remember when I was voted on by the city council. In my absence, I was recovering from surgery, but the moment I got the opportunity to come back was the same day that my granddaughter was born. So that's how we know that it's been eight years. It's been an honor to be with so many wonderful people. I've met so many great friends, and I'm not leaving you, Karen. I will be watching you from afar and near whenever I need to be. And I will always be attending my annual ball. I call it my annual ball. I will be at that awards assembly. Thank you so much for the pleasure, and my time for you has been great. Thank you.
Next, I wanted to call up Commissioner Jennifer Willman. She has been, it's been a shorter period of time, but I'm going to tell you, she is very thorough. You know she's a planner, obviously, by the questions she asks and everything. I knew before she even got on the board, she came before us a couple times during public comment, and I remember making a comment to somebody that she was very well-prepared and everything. So when she joined the board, I was honored to be able to serve with you, and I learned a lot from you, and it is obvious that you're a planner. I'm going to read the plaque. Presented to Jennifer Willman, City of Tampa appointee, in recognition and appreciation of your exemplary service on the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission, 2018 to 2019, and your vision, leadership, and commitment to improving the quality of life in our community, Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Although it was just a short time, I was filling in for someone else who had to leave the commission early, and so I was glad to have that opportunity to serve while I was not working as a planner. Now I'm going back to planning consulting, so I will continue to watch and see what's going on here, and learn and appreciate all that you're doing for us. So thanks for continuing to serve us as our Commissioners, and happy holidays.
I wanted to thank them both, and it's been an honor to serve with both of them. Would any of the Commissioners like to make any comments or anything? And I'm going to take my seat. Okay. Moving on. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda today? Please come forward. Please come forward. Whoop. Yeah, public comment for any items that are not on our agenda? No public comment? We are going to move to item number three, City of Tampa action items. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission staff. We're going to start with the text amendment for electronic billboards. This is part of the July 2019 cycle that the city sends over to us, and this specific amendment is privately initiated. The way that the city code reads is that the billboards are only allowed on designated roadways, and the code identifies those as FAP and FAI roadways. This request would amend the designated roadway to allow any type of billboard. This would include Hillsborough Avenue from Veterans Expressway to Nebraska. The language today reads to Dale Mayberry Highway, so that would be an extension to It would also add the following roadways: Dale Mayberry Highway from Hillsborough Avenue to Kennedy Boulevard, Gandy Boulevard to MacDill Air Force Base, and Gandy Boulevard from Dale Mayberry Highway to West Shore Boulevard. The request would also allow an upgrade to electronic billboard signs that would be done by an increase from 5% to 10% of any sign owner's existing inventory. So a sign owner's existing inventory can be upgraded to an electronic billboard, but that may not exceed 16 signs, and that is an increase from 10 in the code today. So it's increasing the amount that they are able to upgrade. And then they also have this mechanism for billboard signs that are non-designated roadways that might be considered conforming in the city code, and that would be, again, from 5% to 10%, but that would only be from six total allowable signs. That's an increase from four. The code already requires a 75-foot setback from any parcel zoned or used for residential property from the billboard. It also has lighting and mitigation requirements if a residential property is located within 200 feet of a sign, and electronic billboards are not allowed in a historic district or within a west shore overlay. So all of those mechanisms that are protecting the residential and protecting our historic districts are remaining in the code, and those are not changing through this request. The plan does support a consistent sign program, and it supports the reduction of visual clutter through that policy 6.1.9, and we did find that this was in keeping with that policy direction. The plan also finds that, we found that the residential properties will continue to be protected from these impacts, and that is in keeping with those comprehensive plan policies for residential protections as well. And so we do recommend that this be found consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the applicant is here to make a presentation on this.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South in St. Petersburg, Florida. I'm here this evening with Tom O'Neill, both representing Clear Channel Outdoor. Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, what we're seeking to do is expand a little bit of a very, very successful and well-experienced program with the City of Tampa, which actually has been in place with quite a number of jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area for many, many years. And that is to allow some additional digital boards, which requires many multiple paper boards to come down. So what's proposed here today is no major changes to the program. All the restrictions and regulations remain in place. There's no changes. The only thing that we're bringing forward to the City of Tampa is to allow a few more boards, digital boards, to exist, which, again, automatically require many multiple paper boards to come down. So this program has been in place for many years. We're proud to say that the city, nor ourselves, has ever received a single public complaint or concern raised. As you folks know, being involved with the public, that Commissioners' phones ring readily when the garbage isn't picked up. It's been very positive. As well, the billboard company provides a great deal of public advertising, which includes all types of programs, policies of the city. It includes a lot of programs and policies or events by citizens, which are readily used on a consistent basis. And as well, they also provide an entree by small business. In the past, small business had to buy a big piece of paper, had to pay for art, and had to staff for a long period of time. It was very expensive. So now, small business has entry to the signs. You can use them for a day, or a half-day, or several days, and spot them where they need them. So in those respects, again, the proposal or the project has been very successful. I will tell you that Clear Channel was chosen by the chief of police back then, when Mayor Castor was police chief as their business partner of the year in 2011, when they supported the police department in a number of very serious crime incidents, that they switched all their billboards over to them in the entire region when they were seeking some very dangerous people. They're involved now with the federal marshal, FBI, sheriff's office, state marshal, and federal marshals, and all public emergencies, which are actually automatically taken over by public emergencies for hurricanes, weathers, events, and things of that nature. So, again, quite frankly, this is not a large expansion. It's been very successful, a public-private partnership, and we're seeking to make some expansion to it. We appreciate your attention. We appreciate having the staff's support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Dix?
Mr. Chairman, I have one for our staff.
Please turn on your microphone.
I have one for our staff. I noticed in the proposal that there was an expansion, and it said that the owner could go from 10 to 16 electronic billboards on a certain kind of highway, and four to six on the non-FAP, right?
Right, so it's an increase. It is an increase from, they can switch over a maximum of 10%, and that's an increase from 5%, but a total of 16. And that is an increase from 10, and that is correct.
So, two questions, and it's really kind of a bifurcated question, because one would be, why is there any limitation at all? And if there's a good reason why there is a limitation, why did you decide to allow an increase in the elimination?
See, good question. Unfortunately, I don't have any City of Tampa staff here, and this is their code. I would gather that the city needs to regulate it somehow and provide a regulation in that sense, but I don't know. I'll let David Hay add on.
Hello, David Hay, Planning Commission staff. I believe it's a settlement agreement. There was a lawsuit, I believe, and that was the settlement agreement that was agreed upon.
And I'm just going to follow up with that. So would that settlement agreement preclude that same owner having more signs if he were to create a different entity that he was 100% owner of? I mean, it just seems, the whole thing seems so odd to me.
I would think that would be more appropriate to ask the city, but since they're not here, they were advised when this meeting was and the location, so it's kind of surprising that they're not here, but since it's a legal matter with the city, I would think they would be the appropriate entity.
Right, and the language about the settlement agreement, it says that it is a, it's resolved litigation relating to a variance surveillance agreement entered into by the city, and this is for the city and a sign owner, or the owner's predecessor in interest, is how it's phrased in the code.
Okay, I mean, I get it. It just seems odd, but I guess it's not a concern to any sign owners, because they're not objecting, so, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer, I have a question. You used two acronyms in this, in your briefing report, FAP and FAI designated roadways. What are those?
Yes, those are from the code, and I tried to find what they stood for in the acronym in the code in the definition section, and throughout the code on the sign, and I was not able to determine what those acronyms are for, but for the purposes of the section, FAP and FAI roadways are designated roadways in which billboards are allowed.
Are allowed, okay. I also noticed there isn't an accompanying map that sort of shows the, you know, the extent of these corridors, the extent of the expansion of these billboards along the stipulated corridors. Approximately, how many miles are we talking about?
I can put a map on the Elmo right now if you'd like to see.
Okay.
Do we have an Elmo? Okay, so I think a lot of it, so this is the Hillsborough from the Veterans Expressway to Dale Mayberry right here, and then that's going to extend to Nebraska, and the orange is the addition, and then there's also an extension, excuse me, one moment, let me just get my paper. There's also an extension from Dale Mayberry Highway from Hillsborough Avenue to Kennedy, which would be here, and then Kennedy Boulevard from Gandy to MacDill Air Force Base. And this isn't perfect, but it does give a little bit of a visual.
Okay.
And it's not going to be allowed in the west shore business district either, or the historical designated areas of the city.
Okay, so they don't go down to, through Beach Park, those neighborhoods south of Kennedy, down to Gandy, you're saying? to Gandy, you're saying? Okay.
I believe so.
Okay. All right. I have another question. So, billboards, as Mr. Pressman indicated, they've got a lot of older, older billboards that just have one side. Today, we're seeing billboards with, with two sides, on one, you know, on one, you know, one, 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 one...
Two faces.
Right, two faces, rather. How does the ratio of area fit? I mean, is that calculated into the, into the numbers that you were describing, that the, the allowable increase in...
The code language, as it appears before me, does not specify a ratio of area, as I read it today. But that might be a better question for Mr. Pressman.
There are restrictions, both covering square footage, which take fully into account double-sided boards.
Okay. Also, you showed an image of, of a, of a board with a fairly significant solar array sitting on top of it. With this, with this amendment, are they currently allowed, or would this, would this be something new or added? And does that area actually have anything to do with the, the area of the billboard itself? Or is that just sort of discounted, or not considered at all?
Um, sorry, repeat the question, the, the solar, the first part of the question?
The area, the area of the solar array that, that you showed on, on top of one of the billboards, now, is that, is, is that gonna be allowed in this, with this amendment? Or does that already exist? Does that already exist? Or, and if it does, or doesn't, is that area part of the allowable area that, that's related to this, to this amendment?
Yeah, unfortunately, that, that would be more of a city question, but what has been underlined in the packet is what is changing through this. So it's mostly the roadways, and then the amount that they can switch over.
Commissioner Cardenas?
One of the questions that I have is in reference to, to lighting. Some of these areas are a little dark, and I'm kind of thinking about if I'm driving across the Gandy Bridge, yes, there's some lighting there, but if I'm getting to the end of it, and there's a big bright board, is there studies, or, I don't know, anything in reference to that?
Sure, I'll have Mr. Pressman answer that.
They have a very interesting device on the billboards, because there are regulations. It's an ambient light detector. So as the sun comes up, the board gets brighter, brighter, brighter. As the sun goes down, it gets darker, darker, darker. So the illumination is always changing, because the last thing they want is any distraction, and there are elements of the code that control that as well.
So does it have a minimum?
Uh, they get, they...
If that area is not well-lit as it is?
Then that ambient light is gonna, once the ambient light goes down, the lights on the, the internal illumination of the billboard goes way down.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Marina?
I think, I made this questions for staff. Just to clarify, the, the map shows Dale Mayberry from Hillsborough to Kennedy as being included, but the overall, Westshore Overlay District says that you, you can't have, you can't have an electronic billboard in the district. And I believe even the regulations in that overlay are more restrictive than what's defined here. So is, is the map in error, or is...
Well...
I guess that's my question. Why is that, why is that portion being added to the ordinance if...
Right.
...the overlay district prevents that from even occurring?
Right. So on the map, that's why I did clarify. I had the overlay district outlined with that caveat that we can't have those here. Again, this was privately initiated. I'm sure that Mr. Pressman might wanna extract, might wanna answer that question.
It's clearly understood by ordinance that the digital billboards are not permitted in the Westshore Overlay District. I'm sure it's just a marking of the map, but that's clearly delineated, and that's been exercised for many years.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Where'd you go, Jennifer? I'm sorry. So is this, now, how does this amendment relate to the City of Tampa's sign ordinance itself? I mean, is this, is this, would this, would this amend the ordinance, or is this...
It, it's amending the section of the code that deals with billboard signs. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, well, I'll let...
Yeah, I think Commissioner Press wants to ask something.
I understand the City of Tampa isn't here today, but have you or David talked to them? Kind of what is their reaction to this? I'm assuming they've reviewed it as well?
We don't have an official staff recommendation on this.
Is that unusual?
Um, no, they, they do a workshop with City Council on these items, and then they transmit it to us for a Planning Commission recommendation, and then staff brings their recommendation to Tampa City Council with the Planning Commission recommendation.
When you made your determination whether it was consistent, did you consult with city staff?
We spoke about it, yeah, but we don't have an official recommendation from them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this is part of a settlement, you know, are we not, it seems to me we're almost obligated to pass it, you know, but there's not a recommendation? I'm confused on that.
No, this portion of the amendment, so there was a settlement agreement, and that is incorporated in the code by reference, and a lot of the billboard standards came out of that settlement agreement, and then this is an amendment to that section of the code, which...
So is the amendment to comply with the settlement agreement?
The settlement agreement, yes.
Again, this is, again, this is really, we're at a disadvantage, because city staff has, has not shown up for our meeting. So a lot of these questions really, I think, should be directed to city staff. There, it's dealing with the settlement agreement and their legal department.
Does Mr. Pressman have something to add to this?
I would just add that I've had many discussions with the staff and a few of the city council members. So we appeared before a workshop with city council, and city council voted to move this forward. It would have been their option to not move it forward. So for everything I've heard and seen, city's in support. We haven't had any objections or any calls of concern from the staff or the council. And as the staff has well answered, this is an amendment of existing ordinance. It's really, quite frankly, it's just a tweak of a couple items of what the whole ordinance is. If I, if I answered your question. Thank you.
We had anticipated clearly that the city would have some staff here to answer some of these questions. I just asked Mr. Garcia to go out and see if, if somebody from the city could come over quickly, if, if you would like your questions answered before making your consistency finding. I do think we, in order to move this, send this back to city council, we need the, the consistency finding made today. Is that correct in terms of the timing of this? But, but if we wanna take up some of the other items and see if we can get somebody from the City of Tampa over here, we might, we can try that.
I can present on the procedures manual, which was next after the text amendments, if you'd like.
Well, or we could go through the other text amendments.
The other text amendments? I just worry that we might run into the same...
Yeah, we could keep, we'll see, hopefully by then, Tony will have been able to see if somebody's able to come over or not.
Yeah.
They, they might be looking for us on the 18th floor. That's always a possibility, but, but I just, I feel like you all have a lot of questions that you'd like to have answered, so...
No, I don't think we, you know, we can just move on to the next one? If, is that the order you're thinking?
Yeah.
Item B? Yeah, we can go on to item B, and then we'll just come back to A once city staff arrives, hopefully, and we can get the questions answered, and then have a motion and get this taken care of. But we'll just move on to item B right now, which is the skateboard ramps.
Probably a little more fun than billboards. Next, we move on to the skateboard ramp text amendment. Okay, this is a little different. This is part of the July 2019 cycle of amendments. This is initiated by Tampa City Council. A little background, the city has experienced some, we'll say, issues with property owners placing skateboard ramps right adjacent to their neighbor, and when they're out there skateboarding at night, it may not be the most pleasant sound for the neighbor, so they've decided to develop some regulations to handle that. Basically, this request would establish a definition of skateboard ramps in Section 27-43. It, it creates a whole set of regulations regarding the construction and placement of those skateboard ramps on residential and non-residential properties. And it also develops noise attenuation regulations to mitigate for any of those people deciding to skateboard at midnight, or anything like that, out in their, in their backyard. Your staff did find it consistent with policies regarding the land development code and the regulate, the policies regarding the creation of regulations within zoning districts, and also the comprehensive plan has general policies regarding the protection of the city's residential neighborhoods. The creation of regulations regarding skateboard ramps and with mitigating for any of those negative impacts on adjacent uses is consistent with the policy direction outlined in Land Use Policy 9.2.1, 9.2.2, and 15.2.1. So based on that, Planning Commission staff is recommending to you today that this amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Actually, it looks like it was city council initiated, so I'm assuming there's no one from here from the city council. Or is there anyone from the city? Nope. Any public comment on this item? Please come forward. State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Rod Hatch. I'm at 1013 East Patterson Street here in Tampa. I come before you today just to give you a demonstration of how egregious these structures can be. Normally, if somebody would complain to me about the skate ramp next door to them, I'd kind of roll my eyes and call them an old fuddy-dudder. I don't think I'm an old fuddy-dudder, but, so I'd like to show this to you, if I may. Which way is it? This is a 700-square foot, sorry. This is a 700-square-foot structure. Thank you. Directly behind my house, this is my house here in the background. You can see how it's built. It's a giant amplifier. It's not fastened to the ground. It's a giant sail. There's nothing to regulate these. The City of Tampa has regulations for pool decks at three feet high. This is five feet high. On top of that, his land is three feet higher than mine. This is also the view from an upstairs spare bedroom as well, too. The fence you're seeing is nine feet high. This is the pool in the backyard, and this is a retaining wall that's hidden below my nine-foot, or behind my nine-foot-high fence. It's his retaining wall on his property. Because he didn't mitigate the water, all the rainwater damage, all the rainwater flow has also damaged the wall. That fence is now leaning as a result of this as well. In addition to that, when he first built that, he didn't pull any permits at all. He built it right on the property line without any permitting. Then when he rebuilt it, he set it back five feet, still didn't mitigate any rainwater. You can see in the picture, my wife and I have lost all privacy. They're sitting on my fence. This isn't for kids. This is for adults, 35 to 50-year-old men. He says it's for kids. His kids are two and one. He said, "I should get curtains in my house." Well, we spent a lot of money in our backyard to enjoy it. We don't want curtains. We enjoy our privacy. I approached the neighbor, I said, "Look, I don't want to be that neighbor. I don't want to go to the city. I'll help you move the darn thing." And he said he's gonna do what he wants in his own backyard. You know, this isn't just a case of one neighbor either. Many of these structures are throughout Seminole Heights, and more are being built. And I have no problem with skate ramps, but they need regulated. So this is him and his buddies, basically looking straight down into my pool. Not only did he have no consideration with the ordinances of the city, but he decided to add noise enhancements to it as well, too. Embossed membranes, hollow steel pipes, pool coping. Every time he gets signed, I'm now forced to call the City of Tampa Police. Every time they show up, they never have a decibel reader, because they're all in South Tampa or downtown. But the city has been great to work with, just so you know. These are some of the readings of a decibel reading that I purchased. I've measured as high as 115. The wall...
Actually, your three minutes is up, so if you can wrap this up.
You know, just any consideration you can give to this, to push this thing through, I'd greatly appreciate it, and I'm sure future residents of our county would as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? No further public comment? Any questions from Commissioners? Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, actually, I have a question for you. What's been outlaid in here in reference to the changes? Do you think these are changes that would mitigate the issues that you have, or does it go far enough, not far enough?
I do. I, I, I think it goes far enough. I think it addresses the issue, but still allows residents, if they want to build a skate ramp structure, to do that on, you know, it has to be the right lot. You can't put a pool on every lot, nor should you be able to put a skate ramp on every lot. And you, you know, you have to respect your neighbor's privacy, and this individual has no respect.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not generally, my question's not for you, but how would this affect, you know, these existing skate ramps? Like, are these now gonna have to go through like a permitting process, or, you know, what happens to structures that are already existing? How's that gonna play out to really help the problem?
I can answer that, if you'd like, because I've, I've addressed every issue. And I've met with the legal department as well, too. Any permitted structures will be grandfathered in, as long as it was permitted.
So for your situation, your neighbor...
I'm stuck with it.
You're stuck with it?
I'm stuck with it for, for right now. I'm gonna take civil matters, and I'm gonna go after it civilly, as well as his mortgage company as well, too, because it's not insured either.
Yeah, well, you have a problem.
Well, try, try selling a house with a 700-square-foot skate ramp behind you.
Okay. Commissioner Green, and then Commissioner Marina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I agree with, with the gentleman here, the, you know, the skate, noise attenuation for, I, I have no idea how you can attenuate noise on a skateboard ramp. It doesn't matter what the material is, whether it's wood, or some, some other composite material, or it's concrete, or whatever. The sound, the sound does, does reverberate and travels quite, 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 quite a distance. I like skateboard ramps myself. I have no problem with them, but, but, but the pictures you show really, really do scare me, and I would hate to have the same situation occur in my backyard, or my neighbor's situation. But is this, is this a, would this ultimately be, with this code amendment, this, these would be code enforcement-type issues, right? Or would this fall under their code enforcement department to...
Some of it would be addressed by code enforcement, and some of it would be as people came in to get permits, I believe. They, they would have to meet these standards...
Okay.
...going forward.
Okay. Also, on the first page of the brief, it, it talks about, or rather, somewhere I read in here, talks about the, the location, I'm sorry, in the back, in the definition section, talks about the location on, that they'd be allowed in the side yard. City of Tampa has a side yard setback, I believe, about seven feet from the property line, a minimum. And I can see somebody trying to do something, you know, on a, you know, side yard setback that just, you know, make, make matters much, much worse. I, I don't know, I just, I just have a problem, problem with this. I, I, I don't know, you know, if there's a better way to, to regulate this, but, but I do have a problem with the way this is, the way this definition is, is written currently.
I believe in the wording, there's also an occupies residence setback as well, too, of the ordinance, and I believe it's 20 feet.
David, do you have any comments?
Can you repeat? Your, your concern is about the side yard?
The, the, the narrow, the narrow dimensions of the side yard. You're citing both of them.
Yes, the narrow dimensions of a side yard, in, particularly in a lot of, a lot of neighborhoods around, around the City of Tampa, is, is, is quite, quite, quite narrow. And to put a, to put a skateboard ramp that close to the property line, it's, it's just asking for even more problems.
Maybe this addresses under 27-290.9A1. It talks about that the skateboard ramps must meet the required yard setbacks for principal structures, so, based on the zoning district. So they would still have to meet a setback, so if you've got...
So if you've got only seven feet, there's no room to put the skateboard ramp because they have to meet the same as the principal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good.
Okay. Commissioner Marina?
Thank you. This question's for David, too, and if you could just walk me through it to make sure I have this correct. The accessory to residential structure or use, the example shown is like a patio with a skate ramp in the middle of it. I mean, it's just this massive structure. And I guess what I'm thinking of is the ramp you could buy at a Walmart, or you could build with some plywood and two-by-fours at a Home Depot. That's what I'm familiar with growing up with. And I just want to be clear that that is not in violation here, that kids skateboarding in their front driveway are not going to be in violation of this code if it is to be enacted.
Again, that's probably better addressed by the city, but it does talk about an outdoor structure, whether or not permanently affixed to the ground. So I would assume in a, you know, just one that you bought at a store and assembled, it's not permitted in the front yard as well. It says skateboard ramps may be located within side or rear yards, but shall not be allowed in front or corner yards. So it is regulating it from my reading of this and not a zoning... That's not my field, is the zoning. But reading this, yes, it may require that you are doing your skateboard ramps in the backyard, not in the front.
And that's my concern with this, is someone who once had the cops calling me for playing basketball and our front driveway being too loud. I just, I don't want to criminalize children for playing, you know, playing sports or playing activities. So I have a big concern with that, that someone playing in their front driveway is now in violation of a code that I voted on. So that would be my concern. That's why I would vote against this.
Any other questions, concerns? Commissioner Joseph?
I just wanted to say I echo Commissioner Marino's concerns, not to the extent of criminality, of course, but I think this is kind of broad, casting kind of a broad net. Seems a little weird. We don't hear a lot from the city, so I can't support this personally.
I was checking to see if there was any feedback from city staff yet to see, because it seems like we got some questions on this one, too.
At this point, Tony has said he has tried to contact six different staff people and has not been able to reach somebody yet. So I don't know that whether or not we're going to be successful in getting somebody from the city.
And I am not aware of any scheduled, that this is going back to City Council at any scheduled hearing date. So it's up to you. That's my...
Because I would hate to go vote one way or the other based on information where we don't have, you know, we obviously have some questions. So maybe in this situation, we push this back a month if the board is in agreement. So, like I said, I'd hate to vote one way or another on something if there's, you know, some concern that we haven't had answered, questions we haven't had answered. Commissioner Dix?
Yeah, let me just ask one question of Mr. Hay, because it really has to be in the form of a question.
Okay.
But to more or less allay the fears of Commissioner Marino and also Commissioner Joseph, you know, specifically, we're talking here about a skateboard ramp, and it even has a definition of a skateboard ramp and something that has an angle and something can go side to side, et cetera. I don't think anywhere in this does it prevent, preclude, or prohibit any child from riding a skateboard in his, you know, in his driveway. So I just want to emphasize that, because I share their concerns, but I don't think there's anything in here that would prevent, you know, a child from scooting down the sidewalk, scooting down the driveway, or anything like that. Is that your understanding, Mr. Hay?
I wish the city staff was here to address that.
Any other question? Commissioner Joseph?
I just wanted to clarify that my concern wasn't precluding children. It's the potential for administrative, excessive administrative work taken on by the city, for people just flippantly calling something a skateboard because it's made out of wood, has a curve, some person's riding roller skates on it. You know, this collects all those things.
Now, I will say...
So I can see where it could be used in certain ways.
I will say, working for this, well, working with the city staff for a while, there would be interpretations made, and they would interpret that a particular way and try to move forward with the language that they have. Since they're not here, I don't want to make interpretations for them based on how they would read this language, since we're not the people that would be working with this day in, day out.
Okay. Commissioner Marina?
Well, and then, I agree with Commissioner Dixon in a sense that, you know, the interpretation of this should be considered, but, you know, this is in black and white. And so I think one way to kind of deal with this question is, so many kids playing in their driveway, and this seems to prevent that if you're using a skateboard or inline skates. And then the second part of it is, the thing, the ramps I'm concerned about are portable and can be picked up by one or two people. What we've seen as the example can be picked up maybe with a forklift and moving trucks, several of them. So it seems like we're trying to regulate the worst example, but to do that, we have to write it so it includes the least worst example. And so I think if there's a suggestion I can make, that there needs to be sort of a, you know, a definition that if it is to be portable, if it's something that can be moved by human power, then it's not regulated by this code. Because, I'm sorry, I just imagine the scenario of kids skateboarding or rollerblading in front of their house, having the cops call on them and say, "You're in violation of Section 27 of the code."
I would, maybe, because I'm kind of associating with, you know how you've seen trailers used as signs? And they get around the sign code by saying it's mobile. So even though it's, I've seen lighted semi-trucks that are... One might be to maybe have a size range instead of saying a maximum. So then, you may have the small, little ones that you buy at like Walmart or something and have a, if you're building something bigger up to the maximum, then you trigger the regulations. But if it's a small child, you know, I don't know if it's like two feet or something or whatever, that minimum size is, maybe state that, but...
And I know this is not your responsibility.
Because it does say it's not affixed. It's not permanently affixed to the ground under this current one. So any...
The new definition is whether or not permanently affixed to the ground.
Right.
So would you fall in the concern? I mean, I know personally, my neighbor's kids have something they pull out of their garage, put it on the driveway, they use it. And I don't live in the City of Tampa, but, you know, to me, I kind of agree. You wouldn't want to prohibit something like, I wouldn't want to prohibit something like that, you know.
Can I just add, too? And then, you know, a cop can show up and say, "Hey, you know, calm down," whatever. But it doesn't prevent the neighbor from suing the next-door neighbor, saying, "Your kids are interrupting my quality of life because they're playing in the front yard." And that's what we heard today. So we want to prevent the worst actor, right? But to me, this could have been written better in order to alleviate the actual real problem that currently exists.
We could, if we can't, if we don't get a response from City of Tampa, we could look into tabling this to the January meeting. And then that way, we can make sure staff, City of Tampa staff are present to answer our questions, and maybe they can even look at this prior to the January meeting and possibly look at, given some updated language.
Yeah, we would be happy to share your feedback and questions with the City of Tampa and hopes that they would bring something back. The emails that I have from Kathy Coyle, the zoning administrator, transmitting these to us do not indicate a date that they were established for City Council to go back to them for their action. So absent any other information, it seems we would have time to move them to the January 13th meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, you've really anticipated the point I was going to make. It's the second straight agenda item we've been called upon to weigh in on very substantive considerations that have come up without all the facts, facts that to some extent only the city can present to us.
Yeah, so for both of these items, we may want to seriously consider tabling them. And if we don't get a word, whether, I don't know if we've gotten any feedback on if City of Tampa, it sounds like so far, we don't think anybody's going to be able to come.
Yeah, I apologize. Every indication from what Ms. Coyle transmitted to me indicated that staff from the city was going to be here. We even communicated to them the different location, the time of the meeting. So I apologize for them not being in attendance and...
Just to go on the record, I've emailed them two separate times to tell them that the meeting was here at this time. We will see you then.
Yeah, so perhaps if there are any questions regarding the next two code amendment items, we could hear the staff presentation and get any questions. That way, we can communicate all of the questions that are on any of these items to the city and make sure the 13th is a very productive meeting.
Would it affect if we table it?
Yes, I think that would...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you. One last point. I sort of agree with Commissioner Marino, because the images that this gentleman showed is probably the worst-case scenario. That's, and that's a skateboard ramp on steroids, so to speak, because it has, you know, it's so big, and it's a permanent fixture. It's on foundation blocks, and it has decks on it. So it goes beyond what, in my mind, constitutes a skateboard ramp. This is a party deck. Let's face it, okay? It's pretty big. For that big, you know, they're going to have a tournament or whatever back there, okay? But I agree, maybe the, you know, the definition just needs to be clear. And, you know, I'm a visual person. I don't know why they can't just sort of put a picture in there and say, something no bigger than this.
Any other questions or concerns? What we may do is, once we finish this, we listen to the next two, give City of Tampa staff a chance to show up. If they don't show up, we could make one motion to table all four or continue all four of these until the January meeting. So if there are no further questions on this item, we can move on to Item C, cemetery definition.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I'm Danny Collins with the Planning Commission staff. Our next text amendment is a Land Development Code text amendment to cemetery definition. Little background, this is part of the July 29th Land Development Code text amendment cycle. This is publicly initiated by the zoning administrator. The request is to amend and clarify language regarding the definition of cemetery. As proposed, a cemetery is defined as land dedicated to be used or intended to be used for the permanent burial of human remains or cremated remains. A cemetery may include a vault, calambrium, ossery, and a scattering garden. The Planning Commission staff reviewed the request and found the proposed text improves the clarity of the definition of cemetery within the Land Development Code, which is also consistent with the definition provided for cemetery in Florida State statutes, Chapter 497, definitions. The amendment will continue to streamline development processes by providing certainty in the development entitlement process, which is consistent with Land Use Objective 8.14 of the Comprehensive Plan. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed Land Development Code text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That's all I have.
Okay. Would applicant like to speak on this? Okay.
This is the city.
Okay. Yeah. Any public comment on this? Any public comment? No public comment? Any questions from Commissioners or comments? Okay. Let me ask. No questions, Commissioners? Do we still want to continue this one along with the others, since it is a City of Tampa item? Or would someone like to make a motion on this? Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be my opinion that if we're going to continue any of them, we continue the whole batch. So that's just would be my position.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
I just want to say I agree with Commissioner Dowdy.
Yep. I do agree, too, so I just wanted to see what your thoughts were. No questions from Commissioners? We'll move on to the next item, which is Item D, general cleanup.
Okay, so our next one, this is Danny Collins with the Planning Commission staff. Our next amendment is just a general cleanup text amendment to the Land Development Code. This is also part of the July 2019 cycle. This is publicly initiated by the zoning administrator in the City of Tampa. The request is to amend language to the official schedule of district regulations in Section 27-156, and specifically to the schedule of permitted uses by district and the schedule of area, height, bulk, and placement regulations, subsections. These changes would apply to several of the special districts and within the mixed-use Another part of the request is to change an internal code of reference to the official schedule of permitted principal, accessory, and special uses. Currently, under the parking-related notes section and the parking ratios by use table requirements for loading, says refer to Table 1.84.1 below. This is no longer current, and the text amendment seeks to correct this reference by amending it to read refer to Table 185 below. Planning Commission staff reviewed the request and found that the proposed text amendment continues to refine the Land Development Code and ensures it is correct for the members of the public and staff. The amendment will provide certainty in the development process and is consistent with Land Use Objective 8.14 of the Comprehensive Plan. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed Land Development Code text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Thank you. Would applicant like to speak on this one? And that's City of Tampa, too. So any public comment? No public comment? Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just have one question to make sure this was couched as general cleanup, and I just want to make sure that there's not anything that's creating something new of, what is it, the Section 10 Seminole Heights District, that the language, it's all brand-new. It's not like a strike-through. So is there, is it generating some new rule or regulation as opposed to cleaning up a misinterpretation or something like that?
This would be a cleanup, so they're...
Okay, well, what was cleaned up, though? Since it looks like it's brand-new.
They're moving, and the City of Tampa staff could elaborate more on it.
That would be a question for City of Tampa staff.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. No further questions? Would someone like to make a motion to continue these four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we continue these four amendments from the July, where is it? Sorry. Give me one second here. From the July 2019 text amendment cycle to our January meeting.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Dowdy. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Joseph? Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, the Presentation, City of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City Procedures Manual Update.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Malone again, with your Planning Commission staff. Give me just a minute. Thank you, Mike. This is a presentation on something we've been working on for about a year now. It's our municipality's procedures manual update. If you might not be aware, but we have a Plan Amendment Procedures Manual be aware, but we have a plan amendment procedures manual that guides the process for applying for a plan amendment through the Planning Commission. The earliest versions of the manual were separated by jurisdiction. So Tampa had one, Temple Terrace had one, Plant City had one, and they were adopted back in 1986. And so we've always had some form of a manual. It's of course been updated and revised as we've gone through the years. But at the end of the day, it is adopted by each jurisdiction. So today's manual covers the process for all four jurisdictions, for the cities and unincorporated Hillsborough County. At the request of Hillsborough County staff, we're working on separating the manual again. So the cities will have a manual, the Temple Terrace, Plant City, and Tampa. And then the county will have their own manual that goes over some of their intricacies. And that will be coming to you later. I do not have that today. The manual that's before you today has been reviewed by the municipalities, and I have incorporated edits from the attorneys. We do have some text in the manual that's highlighted. That's because it's still under review by Tracy Robbins. So I just wanted to let you know, if you see that, we're, we're still working out some of that text. But we still wanted to get it for you. Some major changes are removal of references to Hillsborough County, because it's not going to be for them, an update to the definition of a small-scale map amendment. And then we also have some more deadlines for advertising, continuation requests, and supplemental information. If staff needs to ask for anything from the applicant, we have a little bit more assurance and language to ask for that information, have it back in a timely manner if the applicant is willing. So we are providing this to you for review and feedback. We are hoping that we will present a finalized manual in early 2020 for a vote by the Planning Commission. Afterwards, it'll be transmitted to the municipalities for adoption. And I'm, I'm available for any questions, or if anybody had any comments on the manual.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for our executive director on this one. Does this make life simpler or easier by being, having these, having this level of consistency?
Yes.
Okay. I hope so. Okay, good. Thank you. And congratulations, oh, well, thank you for staff for working on this for, for the last year.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. No further questions? Thank you. We'll move on to the Hillsborough County Plan Amendment Briefing, 19-08.
Good afternoon. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting the sole amendment for the October 2019 cycle. That's CPA 1908. This site, as you can see, is on the eastern side of the county. It's in the urban service area, just on the fringe. It's in the South Shore area-wide systems plan boundary or within, and generally located on the north side of Lithia Pinecrest, north of Browning Road. The area shows a site, it's in the far corner of Fish Hawk Trails, a subdivision as part of the Fish Hawk DRI in the area. It's a privately initiated amendment, and it consists of 15.94 acres, more or less. As you can see from the aerial, the existing conditions, within the urban service area, as you would expect, it's more dense. These lots are generally a half acre in size. Outside the urban service area, it's distinctly rural, with agricultural lands and rural home sites on large tracts. This is the adopted future land use map. As it stands today, the site is currently designated public quasi-public. It was allocated or set aside for an elementary school. There is an elementary school along, let me get my cursor, along Lithia Pinecrest, Lithia Pinecrest Elementary at 39 in Lithia Pinecrest, existing today. As you can see, the site is surrounded by this beige color, which is residential plan two or RP2. Outside of the urban service area, you see a mixture of residential one and agricultural lands. This is Alderman Ford in the upper corner, just to give you your orientation. This is the proposed map. The applicant's requesting a change to residential two in this corner, which is similar in density, if not comparable, to Fish Hawk Trails. The impact of this change on 15.94 acres, and as you note in, in the title here, I have public quasi-public and residential one. It may be a scrivener's area that I'm trying to, or staff is trying to determine from the roadway. That slipped in on the property appraisers data, but the applicant feels that it's not part of their property. Under public quasi-public, there is no residential density, and the intensity of non-residential uses are guided by the four-year ratio of the properties, land use categories surrounding the site. The applicant again is requesting residential two, which would allow 31 dwelling units, or if the site met locational criteria, 110 square feet or .25 FAR, whichever is less intense. However, it does not meet the locational criteria. The next steps, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on this plan amendment on January 13th, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the executive director's report.
Good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. My report should be getting passed around the dais to you all, which just outlines, it's been a short time period since our last meeting. So there's not quite as long a list of things that I've been doing since the last meeting, or that staff have been doing. But we have been fortunate to have received commendations from all four local governments recognizing the 60th anniversary of the Planning Commission. So we're putting together an article for our newsletter with all the photos of myself and other staff going to the different jurisdictions to accept those on your behalf. And let's see, we've, we also, last week, had an agency-wide staff retreat over at the children's board, where we talked about our next steps in moving forward your strategic plan over the next calendar year, different things that we would be looking at. So we'll be bringing forward some reports on those activities to you all in the future as well. We also have had a, a large number of staff turnover in the last year. So we spent some time on getting to understand work styles and things like that, because we have about, I think it's close to 10 new staff folks in the, last year, which for a group of 50 people is, is a large proportion. So we continue to be located over at 700 Twigs. We have not gotten an update from facilities as to whether or not we will be moving back in as anticipated, six weeks after we moved out. So we have scheduled your January 13th meeting. We have a backup location, which is here on the second floor. So if we're not back in our space, we'll be here. We'll be sure to let you know via email. If anybody didn't see the email, we have our agency holiday lunch this Friday. If anybody's able to join us, we'd, we'd love for you to attend. And our office will be closed December 24th, 25th, and January 1st for the holidays. In January, you will not get so lucky. There are public hearings for both the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County. But I think they're both one plan amendment each, so it shouldn't be too, too much. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, is there a way to brief the, the commission on, on what staff, what staff is doing, what the Planning Commission is doing that has any, any relationship to our transportation issues? I know we'll get a briefing every month on what, what transpires at the NPO board meeting, but, but as, as we've talked about in the past, cal, sort of calibrating, you know, or further calibrating, let's say, you know, our, our land use issues and our transportation issues in a much, much, much better manner, let's say. So is there a way to just provide the, the commission, and maybe it's not on a monthly basis, but, but on a fairly regular basis, you know, what's, what's being done, if anything is being done, or if there's anything that needs to be done, just so we understand how we're moving, moving in that direction?
Yes, absolutely. We would be happy to do that. And I can work with Ms. Alden on, because our, our teams collaborate a lot on those topics, and both bringing back some additional presentations to you on some of the more completed projects. Or I know Commissioner Kress sent me a message about a topic that came up recently at the livable roadways that we're working on scheduling in 2020 to come back. So we're always looking for opportunities for those types of presentations. But we can also tell you about some of the more behind-the-scenes things that staff is working on. For example, at the request of the county, we've been collaborating on looking at some Vision Zero corridors, some of the high-crash corridors, and looking at an approach to how we do some better planning for those, and tying in the land use is an important component to that, to, to the, to the safety equation. So that, that's a more granular level example of some of the work that we're working on. But I know some staff are planning to attend the workshop that HART's having this evening on the Bus Rapid Transit on Florida and Nebraska in that corridor, as that ties in very closely to the transit-oriented development grant that we're working on with HART. But yes, we'll do something more formal than that.
Just, you know, just sort of clue us in, or just remind us. And by the, by the way, this is what's going on. Good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from Melissa? Commissioner Dowdy?
Yes, Melissa, can you give us an update on retreat, or are you still waiting for our chair and vice chair to get reappointed?
Yes. It is, it is our understanding that the county will be making their appointments to the Planning Commission on December 18th. So after we know who those folks are, I was going to send out a poll of dates for your all availability to have a half-day retreat off-site, someplace similar to the children's board or something like that. But it would probably be towards the end of January, knowing how busy you all are. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No further comments? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to move on to other business. First up, chairs business. I, I do not have anything. So any old business? Any new business? Any committee reports? Commissioner Dowdy?
Yeah, I'll, mine will be really brief for the Hillsborough Board Technical Advisory Committee. Our last meeting, we had an interesting presentation by Dr. Massey on history of the Hillsborough River. And he kind of went back through from what it was used and a lot of the pollution, you know, and that the river was the sewer back in the old days. But there was just, there was one point that came in that was actually very interesting to me, and, because I didn't know it, that I wasn't aware of the fact that the Hillsborough River actually caught on fire back in the 1800s. Yeah, it was petroleum, whatever like that. There was a, a steamboat had puffed some ash, and the ash hit one of the dock areas where the, I forget if it was the Trib or the Times actually stored their paper at the time, burned the warehouse up, burned up all the paper, and the river also caught on fire. It was actually, it was very interesting. So just thought I'd share that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Small update regarding the affordable housing board that I was recently pointed on from you all. The, if you don't know, the board was restructured. So now there's going to be 11 members on that board. And I think the, two of the biggest highlights are that they're going to be doing their meetings once a month now versus every other month. So that way, these meetings will not be so long, and, you know, we can try to flush out just, you know, whatever we need to do to, to get done there. One thing that came up that was kind of a point of contention was the, the Schimberg Agreement with the Schimberg Institute at UF. The county entered into an RFP, or accepted an RFP from them, and to get some data. And there was a motion by some of the other members to modify that, to see if there was a way to have them give us data on gentrification and how that, you know, was playing a role into, you know, affordable housing and areas. And so that was probably the, the biggest thing. There was the, also the housing plan that was put forth for next year was presented, but has not been adopted by VOCC yet. And I was supposed to get an email regarding some, some updates, because there was some changes that was done during the meeting, in terms of how much of the $10 million was going to be dedicated to very low-income housing and, you know, low income and moderate. So there were some changes there, but that has to be ultimately approved by the VOCC. And I think that was really the main points.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
At the NPO meeting, the primary action item was that they discussed the process for updating the TIP program project, specifically whether or not the, the governing body or the legislative body of the municipality would have to approve the project list. And the NPO approved, basically asking the agencies and the municipalities for participating with them in a workshop in March. But there was some concern expressed by Temple Terrace and Plant City specifically, saying, we have our, our mayors, and our mayors work with staff on this list. Is it necessary for there to be an additional step, that they have to go to a city council in those cases? So, so that was one of the concerns that was expressed as well. And then I'll also add too, that I will be the, the chair of the livable roadways committee as well.
Okay. So that's the last committee report. We do not have a public hearing tonight. So if there's no further business, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Have a good holiday.